Good evening. I'd like to bring the new Fall 13 Board of Education meeting to order. This is a regular meeting, September 10th. And I would like to welcome my colleagues back and administration who's been here, and all of you in the audience. So, welcome. With that, I'd like to start with public audience. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the board may do so. All right. Seeing none, we will move on to Board and Administrative Communications. And as always, we start with our student representative, Jacob. Welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you back.
Good to be here.
Good.
So, the high school is sort of the beginning of the year, as you can probably well imagine. So, it's pretty crazy. Lots of students still changing their schedules and stuff. The first home football game is tomorrow night, 7:00 on the turf. So, it's a big first home game. Hopefully, good season. FBLA has its first meeting tomorrow morning at 7:00 a.m. And the One Acts Theater Competition is just getting started as well. Their auditions are coming up soon. And so, they're getting more press. It's sort of a little bit of a grasp of what's going on at the high school right now.
Good.
Great.
Good. Good start to your senior year. Great. Good. Thank you. Susan?
Welcome back. That's about all.
Seems like we never left. Tom?
Second.
Todd?
Nothing for tonight.
Chris?
Nothing, Lydia.
Nothing tonight, Lydia. Thanks.
Tara?
I don't have much. I did want to mention, though, that Central School hit its 100th birthday on Wednesday, September 4th.
Happy Birthday!
And I've been working very hard on the committee. And we had a great -- there was a great assembly for the students. But the townwide event will be November 3rd on Sunday. And it'll be a huge open house for anyone who wants to come, anybody who has interesting stories and tales who would like to tell them pre before, please call Central School Office and share anything you want. And if you want to -- if you have any good thoughts about it. But it'll be a fun, full day of excitement and reminiscing about the history of Central School. And it's open to everybody in the town because it's a pretty big accomplishment to have a school continuously run for 100 years.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I understood you buried the time capsule?
The time capsule is buried on the 4th as well. And other time capsules weren't ever found. And that divided with the plastic, I think will be a little easier. The tin cans, I think, are long gone. They've been filled with treasures. But no, so it's an exciting time and it's a big birthday for Central School.
It was really a nice assembly. And Mary Glassman came and gave a proclamation.
Nice.
Very neat. The kids were very excited.
Kids are very excited. And the teachers are very excited. It's a real good feeling.
Good. Good, good, good.
Everybody in town should come on the 3rd because it'll be a very fun day. It's a Sunday. It's all day. It's, you know, it'll be a nice event.
Well, we hope the public will come and support Central School's 100th. More importantly, do we know where the time capsule is buried?
Now, we do, yeah. See how long that documentation lasts.
With a magnet.
Yeah, with a magnet.
Oh, with a magnet.
And any alumni should come too because there are a lot of alumni in town who
Yeah, that's great.
Went through those halls.
Oh, that's great. I'm sure they will. Good. Thank you. Erin?
I do. I have two things. We had a great opening as we welcomed our new teacher -- or all our teachers and new teachers back to school in August. I just want to update you on our August professional development activities. We had two hours where teachers had opportunities to work in their grade level and/or department time following a faculty meeting that all the principals held. And then, the four-hour session that we had the day before school opened was on our new teacher evaluation system. We had done about 12 hours of professional development with teachers back starting last spring. And we followed it up again for teachers to begin writing their own professional growth plans at the start of the school. So, we kicked off the year with that with -- and we had done some work with our new teachers as well. So, everybody was somewhat on the same page and wished to get started. So, it was a great opening in that way, getting people back and focused on the work that they were doing. Likewise, I have two things in your folder that I would just draw your attention to. One is the Simsbury Arts Academy, the fall brochure. And I hadn't looked at it until I opened it. You need a magnifying glass to read the inside of it. But there are lots of great opportunities that will be made available if you can read the --
Okay.
I don't know what size font that is, but --
All right.
And the other document --
There you go.
The other document is an important one from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, NIASC, as we know it, that comes in every 10 years to do an evaluation at our high school. And they had -- on June 23rd, they did a review of our pre-study -- pre-self-study report and have continued our accreditation, which is really good news. And that we are up for reevaluation again in the year, the calendar year of 2016. So, we don't know whether that will be the spring or the fall of 2016. So, we're in good standing and we will just wait until all of the preliminary work begins for that 10-year evaluation that will occur in 2016.
So, we really don't have to start any preliminary work until
We're in good state right now.
Until that.
We are.
Great. Good. All right. Burke?
I have two financial items this evening. First is some news that's in the board's packet from KERMA, which is our Connecticut inter-local risk management agency. It's a government member, government insurance company for towns and cities in our state. And what's becoming somewhat of an annual event is that we received a members' equity check for $5,539 for the past year. And that's about $17,000 over the last three years in checks that we have received back for the positive performance of our group. So, that's good news. And we're happy to report that. The town of Simsbury is also a part of that and received a check also.
Awesome. Good.
Hey, Burke.
Yes?
This is Workers' Comp? Is that what this -- what lines of coverage? What lines of coverage?
It's our liability auto property as well as our workers' comp.
Okay. Thank you.
They handle it all for us.
All right.
And the second item had to do with our annual audit that Bloom Shapiro does. We have a kickoff meeting every summer that's attended by a representative of Board of Finance, Board of Education, Board of Selectmen, and then Staff, Financial Staff. Tom Dorn was there again for the second year, representing the Board of Education this summer. Auditors will be coming later on this fall. But one of the conversations that came out of that meeting was to expand the focus for the auditors, expand their scope of work a bit, to some of the other departments, both in the town and Board of Education, to do some additional, what's called agreed-upon procedures. And those, the focus that we are supporting happening, and the Board of Finance is trying to get finalized, is to just do some work in all seven schools with the activity funds. The activity funds are there to accept donations and take in fees for various things. But just, you know, this will give us some recommendations on how we can strengthen our receipts and cash disbursement processes. So, something that we're supportive of and just will be confirming to the Board of Finance that this is a good thing to do moving forward. As you may recall, Kirishion was hired about a year and a half ago to work in our office as our accountant and budget analyst. So, this is an area she's been working with all of our schools on over the past year or so. And this just supports and strengthens the work that she does. Any other questions or comments? That's essentially the message we'll be confirming back to the Board of Finance.
Board of Finance. Okay. Good.
Burke, I know we had our initial meeting. I didn't get a sense of timing from any of that stuff. Did you? Have you gotten timing?
I have not. I've seen the drafts go. And that was not clear to me whether, I mean, it would make sense that they would do it when they're already out.
Right.
And they'll be doing their work in the latter part of November.
Okay.
So, unless I hear otherwise, I'm going to assume it's going to happen in that timeframe. But I still need to verify that.
Okay. Good. Thank you, Tom, for participating in that.
Good fun over the summer, yeah, auditing.
That's what you live for.
It's good.
Were you just the right board member to do that, be in that committee?
Appreciate that.
Good.
That's all I have.
All right. Mr. Curtis?
Hello. Yeah. Just wanted to reiterate, as Erin did, I think we had a very positive opening. I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to the school opening report. Did want to share that I was just -- I was very moved by the speech of our Teacher of the Year, Betty Lakota, who, 39 years being a teacher here within the Simsbury Public Schools, and really framed her comments around the theme of who am I and why am I here with the first slide being a picture of her as a kindergartner at Terrifield School 53 years ago and that she's had 53 first days of school in Simsbury. And I think it was just a theme that was very passionate and very in alignment with what we really stand for and the quality of our staff and commitment level. So, I wanted to share that and thank Betty for that. The other piece I wanted to share is we're going to continue with SCTV this year on kind of a monthly TV spot. And Neil has just filmed a spot with Dane Street, our Director of Athletics and Student Activities, which will be coming up, talking about some of the new programming and questions, question and response about things in areas of interest with athletics. So, we'll continue to do different topics throughout the year.
And this is our third segment that we're doing?
Third or fourth.
Third or fourth. Right. Right. So, we've done several segments on very various
We did school climate.
Climate.
We did facilities and enrollment. We did a segment also on introducing some of our new administrative staff.
Technology.
Technology as well. Thank you.
Good. Good. So, this is a great outreach for the community to find out about Simsbury Public Schools. Good. Very good. That's it?
Yeah.
All right. So, first, just two little things. In your folders, you have the hot topics, probably a hot topic from CAE, unless I'm the only one that got that. It was about -- it is canceled. It was the one for September 18th. Did they get it or just me?
Just you.
Just me. All right. Well, it was a hot topic. CAE sponsors these. Just came to me. For September 18th. And unfortunately, it was had -- it's canceled. But it was about the pre-K and the state's role now in school boards and pre-K initiatives. So, this will be rescheduled because the speakers could not make it, and I will let you know. So, we have a series of hot topics throughout CAE which are going to be applicable to all boards and board members moving forward with school reform, school initiatives. So, I will keep you posted on that. The other thing I'd just like to remind my fellow board members here is that you probably also received the event that's going to be placed by KSEC. And maybe administration can talk further on this, on September 19th. And this is a suicide prevention intervention training program. So, if any of you are interested, please register with Miki La Courzbeke at Social Services. This is the first time that we are going to be -- this will be offered through KSEC, which is the Connecticut Association of Substance Abuse Council. And the director's Tom Steen, one of our former parents. And he will be presenting there. So, it went out to all boards and commissions and school personnel. So, it will be of interest. And it's a whole morning workshop to somehow get a better understanding of suicide prevention and what is going on within our community, our schools, and our neighborhoods. So, that's it. The other, I just, last night, I attended briefly the charrette. It was, as you know, was going on, the charrette concerning the Hartford Insurance. So, the consultants were there. And I was asked just to come and speak with the consultants regarding the Board of Education's interest in what is going on. And obviously, we do have an interest in that, as you all know, with the loss of Hartford Insurance and the loss of the tax revenue. So, I spoke with one of the principal consultants about that and reiterated again what other town officials have reiterated, especially Board of Finance, as we go into budget season starting in November. So, it was important for them to know where we sit. And again, it, tonight is the following, follow-up, final presentation that they will be having. It's going on right now as we speak, of presenting what has happened in the past several days. They've had community input. They've had very different stakeholders, you know, come and talk about what they would like to see in that property and what is the best use of that property. So, that was it. So, I did speak with them and let them know that, you know, superintendent is available in central office if they have any further questions about the role of Simsbury Public Schools and Board of Education in the process. So, that is it. All right. So, moving along, we are on to Recommended Actions, Exhibit 1.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes.
I was present at that meeting. If you could just put my name in there, I'd appreciate it.
All righty. Very good. Do I hear a motion?
This is June 11th?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
June 11th, regular meeting.
I'll make a motion, proof of the minute.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Approval of minutes of June 28th, Exhibit 2. Seems like yesterday we were here. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, motion passes. All right. We are on to Personnel.
Can we --
No.
I'm sorry. July 26th. Approval of minutes of July 26th, special meeting.
So moved. I have a comment. Under Recommended Actions, A, we need to put Assistant Principal, Appointment of Simsbury High School Assistant Principal.
It says that.
It says this right here.
Okay. Says it on your copy?
Yeah, it does.
Good. Excellent. Oh, it says on my copy, too.
Right here. Okay. It does say. Pardon? It was
Thank you.
Got it. Very good. Do I have a motion on the table?
Yeah.
Second? Do I have a motion?
I'm moving.
Susan, second?
Second.
Tom? Any other discussion? We're all set? Motion passes. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Terry, you have a question?
Yeah. So, what did we just approve? June 28th, correct?
Yes. Right.
July 26th. July 26th. That was our special meeting.
Because mine doesn't say -- my copy says, Exhibit 3 says
Keep reading.
It's in the motion.
It's in the motion.
Right.
It's right. Yeah. The motion's correct. Right. Okay. Thanks.
Very good. All right. All set?
Are you okay, Tara?
I'm feeling better. First meeting back, you know.
Absolutely.
You're not going to do this all the time, are you?
I had to make a little trouble.
Absolutely. I mean, see, this is what happens when you have a short summer away from one another. Okay. Katie, got all that? Good. All right. We are on to Personnel, Exhibit 4.
Yes. In Sue's absence, I will do the Personnel Exhibits this evening. First are employees that have put in their notice of intent to retire within three years. So, I'd ask that the board make the motion to accept the notice of intent to retire of Bridgette Newley, Betty Lakota, Joanne Mitchell, Tom Centino, Marilyn Straylau, effective June 30th, 2016.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I make a motion.
Tara made a motion, second?
Mike second.
Susan, any discussion?
I think we have to commend and just be so thankful that they were all here for so long and were so great for our community and our district. It's a huge loss to lose this huge, all this talent. It's ridiculous talent.
It is amazing.
And they were all wonderful to so many kids and such an influence, such a positive influence on so many students.
Absolutely.
We appreciate it.
And I think this is
And we still have a couple of years.
Yes.
Yes.
We do.
Thank goodness. Absolutely right. I mean, it's quite a list.
So, say thank you for the next three years.
Yes. Yes.
Good. Terry, you made a motion?
Yes, I did.
Second? Do I hear a second? Susan, any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. We are on to
There was one retirement over the summer that we would ask the board to make a motion to accept the retirement of Deborah Leach, effective July 31st, 2013.
Very good.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Chris, any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
The next group are those folks that have resigned over the summer months. I would ask you to accept the following motion. Move that the Board of Education accept the resignations of Lisa Berliner, effective June 25th, 2013, Karan Carpenter, Kara Wadlinger, effective June 26th, 2013, Jessica Baker, effective July 15th, 2013, Tor Fisk, effective July 19th, 2013, Dawn Anstadt, effective July 24th, 2013, Catherine Pilo, Leann Ryan, and Tyler Webb, effective July 26th, 2013, Anna Aguirre, and Kathleen Goodrow, effective July 30th, 2013, Catherine Donovan and Ellen Montos, effective August 9th, 2013, Jeffrey Hall, effective August 16th, 2013, and Zachary Washburn, effective August 21st, 2013.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Can I just ask a question? Just, are there any themes to these resignations in terms of, you know, steps or, you know, I know we talked last year about, you know, kind of the structure, step structure, and that being
Right.
Kind of a problem, if you will, or an issue? Is, are there any themes in these that you'd
You know, one thing we do is we hold exit interviews with folks who does those personally. And I think if I could pin it on three, you know, themes, there's no one major theme. I think certainly there were some folks in that middle-level salary schedule that left because of dollars.
Yep.
I think that several people, it was proximity of where they lived and connections to towns where they took the job. And several of these were kind of promotional in terms of that next level up in people's own development and work. So, I can't pin it on any one thing.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, this is, in past history, this is
Last year, I believe, I went back and look, this is about 15 last year. I think we had 11 or 12, so not
Uh huh.
So, are there any big, kind of, are there any spots in here that are going to be tough to replace?
I will say, I mean, there's certainly some very valuable people here, so I don't want to slight anything from that sense. But I feel great about the new hires and the new people we've brought into the organization. One of particular, you know, I don't want to say angst, but thought when it happened was the Director of Guidance position, is such a high-profile position at Simsbury High School. And I think we were able to replace that with an incredibly talented veteran person. So, I feel fortunate with that particular vacancy.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any other questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. We're on to
Appointments.
Oh, appointments?
Acceptance of gifts.
Acceptance of gifts. All right. Exhibit 5, acceptance of gifts to Squadron Line School.
So, Burke will work us through those next three items.
All right. So, in keeping with our board policy of requiring approval for gifts in excess of 1,500, we have two gifts, each of $2,500, in support of our Squadron Line team that participated in the Kids Lit World Finals in South Africa this past summer. So, took place during our board, since our last board meeting. And this money helps to, helped to pay for the airfare for the four students and the two teacher chaperones. There were also 65 other individuals and organizations that made donations totaling just under $19,500. So, we're really thankful for all of those donors. But the board is being asked to approve those two larger ones, one from Ensign Bickford Foundation and the other from Blue Engine Message and Media, Eric Smith. So, I'd ask the board to consider approval of that this evening and to give our thanks.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Susan, second?
Second.
Chris, any discussion?
It's pretty great.
Just, my neighbor went on this, and it was a phenomenal trip. And the kids loved it. They had a blast and got so much out of it. And as did their parents. They had great experiences while they were there. And it was just a fantastic thing. So, thanks to everybody who contributed. What a great opportunity we gave the kids.
It was a very great honor. Great honor. Was this the second year that this program
This was the second year. And I believe Meg Evans is here, the principal. But we had four students that attended, and I believe we came in fifth in the competition. So, not only did they have the opportunity to compete, but they also did a lot of fun sightseeing activities as well. But, you know, I don't know, Meg, if you have anything else to add?
I think some of the feedback was is that they were true ambassadors of Simsbury and Squadron in our state, that their ability to interact with other students from the different countries. There were dinners where they would meet and converse with authors and other literary experts. And so, for them just to be able to engage in those levels of conversation and interact with others and just be a part of that group really made everyone very proud. So, we're certainly excited about the academic component, but also the fact that they would be such representatives of our community. And they couldn't have done that without the generous donations of the town. So, we really do appreciate that.
That's great. How did they get accepted? This is the second year in row. Last year, they were in New Zealand, I believe?
It's a competition.
They wanted here.
There's a, the local competition for the U.S. is at Central. And so, there were quite a few teams. And so there were quite a few teams, I don't know the exact number, but Squadron had four teams that competed and we had one that took the championship. And then whoever wins that round goes to the world finals, which is all over the country. Next year's in Canada, so we're hoping that...
A little easier.
Yeah, that's, oh, that's great. That's great. That's great.
How long were they there?
It varied, but they were there for a minimum of seven days and then some families were able to extend it. But they were able to go to game refuges. The place that they were, Durbin is known for its beating, so they were able to do some of the beating along with some locals. So it was quite an experience for them.
That's great. That's great. So when do you start preparing the students again for, or when do they start preparing for the next?
I think what makes us most proud is that we don't do a whole lot of real prep until after they win the competition. We're a very inclusive school in developing our teams. We just let the sixth graders know about it and anyone who signs up, who wants to be a part of it, is a part of it. They were competing against some teams that are gifted and talented and there are some teams that have been like in it for three years and they've been training and for us to have this level of success, level of success with the inclusion model that we have is just, makes it even that much more special.
That's great. That's great. Well, I'll even, I'll even add, I think in June you had onstage the teachers, the staffers, the students in that. So Susan and I attended, so that was great. That was very, very interesting. So I applaud, applaud the teachers. As Susan and I were sitting there, there were some tough questions.
The wealth of knowledge those kids had was stunning.
I think it really shows another community effort that we couldn't do it, you know, it's a culmination of the involvement of parents and teachers and students all working together, that if you didn't have those three pieces all together, they couldn't have the success that they do. So it's really a success of the community.
Good. Thank you. Look forward to another team this year. Great. Where in Canada?
I'm not quite sure, so...
Well, we have a Board of Ed member who knows Canada very well, so he'd be happy...
Is this how many you're going to drive them?
Just volunteered, so good. Thanks, Meg. Thanks, Erin. Very good. Do I hear a motion? I have a motion. Second, where are we? Second?
Just vote.
I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Great. Look forward to next year. All right, we are on to exhibit six. Gift to Simsbury Public Schools, Henry James.
Okay, the next two items here are PTO gifts. And this is the latest from Henry James, PTO with some technology donations. The total value is four thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. And they are looking to donate five iPads and eight Chromebooks that would be used in both Language Arts as well as World Language and Reading Intervention Programs. And Social Studies will be the location for the Chromebooks. And this brings PTO's total donations up to a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars since we started tracking that back in two thousand seven, two thousand eight. Those are PTO donations just for remarkable, those types of causes. And we'd ask you to approve that donation as well.
Very good. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Susan, do I hear a second? Tera, any discussion?
Couldn't do it without them.
Yeah, that's wonderful. That's, that's one, that's, that's great. Very, very well needed, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Henry James, PTO, for that very generous donation. All right, we are on to exhibit seven. Gift to Simsbury Public Schools Squadron Line, PTO.
In one of your last meetings in June, you may recall that there was a donation for the same purpose that the board approved, sixteen thousand dollars. And over the summer, we were happy to receive word that there was an additional amount of money. And we have some representatives here this evening from the PTO, Kristi.
That's great.
Hi, I'm Kristy Passgavis.
Hi, Kristi. Of course, Maggie is here. We worked in terms of defining a larger scope of work. So now with a new additional donation that they were proposing of twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars, we bring the total project budget for our renovation of the playground at Squadron Line to thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. And we're very excited to get the plans finalized and actually have an install scheduled for this fall, pending your vote this evening. So I know there'll be more word coming out through Meg and Kristi, looking for volunteers for certain aspects of that hereon. But for now, we'd just like to get this, the board's okay on this project budget.
Great. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Michael, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Wonderful. Great.
Any comments?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, I just wanted to thank the community for that. We're very excited. We thought Phase One was just going to be able to renovate the sandbox area with some dinosaur bones in it. And then through the generosity of people, we were able to come up with this larger sum. And so we will be able to replace the playscape area and put in some other equipment like a balance beam and some climbing things. So we're very excited about this opportunity. The playground has much need of replacement, so again, we couldn't do it without the support of the community.
That's right, yeah. Thank you. We're really excited about it. Cannot wait for it. So we're fingers crossed there are no big October storms this year.
So far, so good.
I am keeping my fingers to ourselves.
Singing to the choir here.
That's, that's right. That's right. And I will volunteer the Board of Ed should you need volunteers to help that, so we can get this thing moving.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very, very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. All righty, we are now on to Information Reports, exhibit eight in your packet, the School Year Opening Reports, 2013, 2014.
Okay, thank you. So we have, I think, a lot of really positive information to share about our opening and we're going to take different pieces of the puzzle and work through this from kind of the personnel side of new hires. Talk a little bit about enrollment, talk about facilities and talk about the curriculum development work that was done over the summer. But I just want to go back and say that as superintendent, I felt like our convocation and our kickoff to the school year was very positive and really tried to send the message and thank the staff for how we have approached the change process. I mean, we have talked at this board level over the past year a lot about the different facets of change organizationally that we're faced with as a result of many of the kind of concurrent reforms that are going on. And I think that our teachers have faced that with a high level of class and motivation. And we'll continue to work through that collaboratively together. And I think that'll be really important over the course of this year. And I really tried to touch on a few would sound like simple themes, but I think organizationally are very important. And that is that every child deserves a highly effective teacher. That's why we're here. That's our mission. And at that same time, every staff member and every teacher deserves a really strong professional culture to work in. And if we focus on those two things and develop them together, I think we'll be extremely successful as we work our way through. So we received positive feedback on that. You know, when you, when you open up, you don't think about all the different nuances of the organization, but you know, the transportation effort alone to coordinate that and the bus stops and everything to get kids to and from school on those first, first days are, you know, can be anxious for people. And it was great to see that we moved things through relatively smoothly. So I am going to turn things over to Erin for the first part of this and then I'll be back to talk a little bit about enrollment.
All right, so there's several parts to our opening report tonight and I'm going to kick it off with the new hires and certainly not going to take credit for all of this. Sue Lemke certainly spearheaded the hiring process that began last spring. But in her absence, I'm going to show you and share with you the kinds of experienced people, new teachers and experienced teachers that we brought into the district. So we're always looking for the top quality teachers. At Simsbury High School, we hired seventeen new staff members from a variety of different backgrounds and areas. And all of them have stepped right into the, the work and working, it's like they were, been here a long time. So seventeen new folks at Simsbury High School. At Henry James, we welcomed eight new staff members, again, from Social Studies to Math to Special Education and Music. And some of these folks with experience and some brand-new people to the profession as well. At our elementary level, we welcomed ten new staff members at every one of our schools. Either one or two folks that are new at our elementary level. Again, we brought in people that are brand-new to the profession and some with experience. So this next slide really does show you the experience that teachers came to us. Out of thirty-three new people that we hired, there's a variety of experience that they come with. Twenty-two of the new people have zero to five years of experience. Five of the folks that we hired, six to ten. And we hired eight people with eleven or more years of experience this year as they come to us. We also look at the academic preparation that teachers come to Simsbury with. And as you can see, we have twenty-seven or, twenty-seven out of the thirty-three teachers that come to us with a master's degree or beyond, with about the rest of them, eight of them, that are just brand-new right out of school. So it does round out and gives us a real variety of experience when they come. When we welcome our new teachers, we bring them in about five days before the rest of the faculty come for the first day of school. And we have designed those days to really give them an opportunity to hear about the Simsbury Public Schools, hear from different folks, not just Sue and myself or from Matt Curtis, but from a variety of folks, to get a sense of who we are, what we believe in, and what our mission is for the Simsbury Public Schools. So Matt kicks off the opportunity with our new teachers, talking to them about our belief set and his vision for the work that we do here in Simsbury. I do a fun kind of video with the new teachers, showing them the layout of the Simsbury, the actual footage of what we look like, the, the north, the south, the east, the west, and giving them an opportunity to really interact with who the principals are and get a sense of who they are. We do a really nice piece for new teacher orientation where we bring back second-year teachers. And we brought back four folks this year, Tamara Edney, Kelly Callahan, Steve Turgeon, and Melissa Listaco. So somebody from elementary, middle, and high school. And they actually designed their own presentation and the fact that they're still standing and surviving and actually really enjoyed their first year in Simsbury. And so it's great to hear them give their experiences of what it means. And you hope that out of these thirty-three, we'll have some of them standing in front of new folks again next year. We did a huge piece with the teacher evaluation, as I had mentioned earlier. Last spring, we spent about twelve hours with our current faculty and really prepped them on the new teacher evaluation plan. And so we actually used about three hours and brought them on board with what the teacher evaluation plan here in Simsbury looks like. Interestingly enough, many people that came from other districts were very unfamiliar and had not even seen elements of the new teacher evaluation plan. So we were pleased that we had been a little bit ahead of the curve and were able to really get them in. And then other folks, when they got to their buildings, their departments, or their grade levels, able for others to help them as well. John Cia gave some nice overview on technology to get them set up. I talk about professional learning communities. We engaged Cindy Frelinger and Terri Heinz to talk about the most important part. And we actually kicked the week off with that, when just trying to get them to know what their benefits are, what, when they're going to get paid, and then all the other personnel procedures that need to take place, so.
They listen much better when they know when they're going to get paid.
We actually did that on the first afternoon. So another aspect that we actually kicked the, the week off with, and we've got four folks here that are going to give you a little bit of what they did with our, and what they do over the course of the year with new teachers, first-year teachers or teachers in their second year. And it's the team process. It's the induction process. And what we have done here in Simsbury is that we have Jan Sands, who is our lead, and I'll have Jan Sands come to the table, and her colleagues, who we call master mentors. And we actually have a few others that were not able to be here, but Paige Colantonio, Sharon Cabell, and Laurel Arshenball are here as well. And so they're going to walk you through a piece of the work that they do with new teachers and continue to do, which is a state-mandated piece of, for new teachers. So I'm going to pass it to you.
Before you go on, can I just, going back to your first year at Simsbury, that's really interesting that you have the four teachers that came, either in their second year.
Yes, yes, yes.
Were there any similarities or dissimilarities in, in the four teachers when they were talking about their first year, they concluded their year?
You know, they, they all came with very different backgrounds. Tamara, you know, at the elementary, and Kelly at the elementary, Steve at the middle and the high school, and Melissa, you know, a high school math teacher. It really, they, they did, it's about learning just what happens every day, you know, what's coming up for the next week or the next month. But they really felt, which I think is excellent feedback, and they may talk about it as well, is the culture of collaboration and the support that other people step up and give to new people, which is really helpful. But just getting through it your first year, now they feel like pros. When we bring them back, you know, these four people, they're standing up there like, you know, they're feeling really good. Where last year, they were sort of sitting there not knowing what it was going to be. But these folks have their hands really right around these new people. And I can't, this is, this model that we have here in Simsbury, I want to take it on the road because these are spectacular people and they care about our new teachers. And the work that they do is, goes unmatched by any other district, as far as I know.
We actually, we're actually the musical interlude for the night.
Excuse me, Tom, you have a question?
Just one thing.
Yes.
I mean, a lot of, a lot of moving parts, comings and goings. How many openings right now are there throughout the system and in terms of, are you all, are we all set?
We're staffed out.
We're staffed out.
Yeah.
We're all, we got it all, right up until...
We, as I said to Matt a little earlier, I mean, the hiring, some of the resignations were late in August, so the hiring took place right up until then, but we're fully staffed.
And those are actually, you know, from a personnel standpoint, Tom, those can be tricky because you kind of have the right to hold an employee that resigns in August for thirty days by contract. But you also recognize that in a classroom teacher situation, that's not best for kids to bring a teacher back for twenty, twenty-five classroom days, establish an environment, and then transition in. So while it did create quite a bit of busyness in a, in a few small cases, I think it's worth putting the time in on that spot to make sure by day one, you have a good qualified person in that, in that classroom.
Thank you. I know you guys are all busy over the summer. Thank you for your hard work.
And Sue is not here tonight, but she certainly led the, the work on this, so. All right, Jan.
So we are, thank you very much for having us. We are here to talk about team and, and the way we start with new teachers, and we're going to pretend you're all new teachers too. And so please say something, because it's really bad when no one answers. We start off with this graphic, which is from the State Department, because this is a state-run program and it is a teacher induction program. So we always start off all of our new teacher orientations, talking about what they think this graphic symbolizes, because obviously it wasn't chosen just willy-nilly. So what do you all think that it might represent in terms of team, which is obviously teacher education and mentoring program?
Well, it says chair. Can I just like pick one of my colleagues?
No.
It's your state. There are no bad answers.
There's no wrong.
Well, as chair, I get to go last, so. Anybody?
Oh, I thought you were going to pick.
Oh, well.
Okay, Chris, there we go.
Before I ask when I get paid, I'll answer that question.
You can ask whenever you want, it's still the answer is the same.
I actually see two things. I see two people working in conjunction, but I also see the synergy and choreography of two people dancing.
Very nice. We're big on the dancing. Any others?
Anybody else?
Reach for support. I see that.
To me, it looks like they're climbing over something together.
To me, it looks like collaboration and collegiality as they get to the top of the summits, which means that they've achieved where they want to be together.
Thank you. Thank God no one said jumping off a building. I haven't had that answered. I have to try to think of something for you to say in response.
The big mutual bungee jump.
There are no strings.
This is really very important, the idea of working together. And this is where I think the, the faculties in Simsbury have done an outstanding job in mentoring the new teachers. This is a collaborative program that demands almost as many hours from the mentors as it does for the new teachers. And, and I would just like to publicly congratulate the dedicated people who spend a lot of time with new teachers here in Simsbury, helping them to not only understand the team requirements, which we'll briefly talk about, but just surviving each and every day, how to get to the end of the period, when the period ends perhaps for, for at the high school. So you should all be very proud of the work that these people do with very little financial compensation. They just do it for the good of our profession and for our future colleagues and the future of the students in Simsbury. As Matt said, this is all about quality teaching for the kids in our classrooms, and that's what this program is about. It's a two-year induction program for new teachers or those who have not been previously certified in Connecticut, so there could be veteran teachers in this program as well from other states. And the, the basics are mentorship and professional development. And it's about growing, starting from wherever you are and growing over the course of the two years and establishing habits of mind that my friends will talk about for the rest of your careers, not just for two years. And it's a series of five modules, and we're not going to bore you with a lot of this technical business, but it's aligned to the Connecticut Common Core of Teaching so that what all of us are expected to exhibit in our classrooms in terms of the skills that we should know and be able to do for an effective teacher, for veterans, it's also expected of beginning teachers as well. And so we and the mentors guide these new teachers along this path, which we hope is one filled with collaboration.
Can I just go back for a minute? I just want to say on those five modules and our seven teaching standards that we've talked with you a lot about are absolutely aligned to these five modules. So we, that's the backdrop of this work and the backdrop of our teaching standards on how they were created are definitely aligned. So that's good news on this part. I'm sorry.
So it's a one-to-one, every new teacher has a mentor?
Yes, it's one of the wonderful ways that Simsbury is supportive.
Regardless of the number of years they have coming into the system? So we saw that a lot, some of the teachers had eleven, eleven years.
No.
Well, if they haven't been certified in Connecticut, yes.
It's tied to certification.
It's tied to certification.
And that's what this, that's this next slide. This is tied to Connecticut certification. So successful completion of this two-year program is required for teachers who have, who have an initial education certification to progress to provisional. My lovely colleague Paige.
Yes, for the mission, you were, you were saying, what does it stand for? And it really is the collaboration and working and really developing that with our, with our mentees and also with the staff to come in, then making sure that they feel welcome. What does it look like? You've got this knowledge, let's go into it. And our mission is, let's put it to practice, which next slide will, will show is we're going to build on the knowledge and the skills that they have. And as a mentor and as people that we get together to oversee the mentors, we work hand-in-hand professionally, which is the next slide, but just to tell you, we have meetings every fourth Tuesday. We're there for support and they can come anytime. I'll go to different schools on the elementary level to help. If they can't come to Central where we, we held our meetings. And having a mentee last year and having them for two years, it was wonderful because you think, oh, yeah, I really should reflect on this. And coming into the new evaluation, when it was first rolled out last spring, I went, oh, we have team. I know what you're talking about, because we've been doing this. So they will be prepared. It will be really nothing new. It will be new for veteran teachers, just to take that time to, okay, let's put it into practice. What am I really going to work on? Collaboration? They're all set. So it's really great, so we can come together, help and guide them along the way. Be a big sister or a big brother. Really does help.
As Erin mentioned, the module process reflects the Common Core of Teaching Standards and Simsbury's Teaching Standards. The five modules include Classroom Environment, Planning, Instructing, and Assessment. The fifth module, we've been able to be part of a pilot program for the past two years where we've been able to bring mentees and mentors together and identify certain professional responsibilities that we have. We've, the first year we did it, we separated the high school and the middle school and the elementary. This past March, we brought everybody together, which was really incredible to have the dialogue across grade levels. The one area that we do need to cover is, as deemed by the state, is bullying. And then there's other things such as social media, communication, things like that. When the mentor and the mentee first work together, they identify a need for their professional growth and this reflects back to the specific modules. They identify an area that they want to work on and then plan out what they're going to do. When they make their plan, that's signed off by the building administrator, and that's signed off for a couple reasons. There's that accountability factor and should they need additional resources. Now, that's usually like a book, maybe a conference. We're pretty sure they're not going to get to go to Hawaii or anyplace like that, because we have tried that on occasion. Then the student, or the, the mentee works along with the mentor in figuring out what they need to do. need to do. This is all a web-based program, so the mentor records all the meetings. We're responsible for doing at least 10 meetings, 10 hours, with the mentee prior to their submission of a paper. And the mentee will keep a log on the website. We encourage all mentees to not only do that, but keep everything in Word, just because our first year with the website was kind of shaky. We learned a lot. And then the whole process starts all over again. In terms of Simsbury's support...
I just want to make one comment. That module process that Sharon talked about, that is the same process that veteran teachers are going to go through in the new teacher evaluation program. So we'll all be on the same page, but I wanted to just echo Paige's comment that the new teachers are going to be ahead of the curve and the mentors, because the mentors who understand the looking at the standards and demonstrating growth are going to be all set for the new teacher evaluation.
And it's done, you know, four times by these new teachers. They do it for every single module, except for the professional growth, which is done a little differently. So they really are used to that process and that system. For Simsbury's support, we offer a lot of supports. We've done this now for a few years that we've established this ever since the Best Portfolio program, if you remember that. This is what has taken over. We have established a team coordinating committee to develop a support plan for our school system. We meet twice a year, usually twice a year, and we have people from around the district that all are part of this, as well as a representation from the S E A. So we're all on board with what is going through with this process, with teachers, administration, and with the S E A as well, to make sure we're all on board. The team district facilitator, you know, Jan Sands. We also have the master mentors at each school, so everybody is stationed, except for elementaries, you do have to share. We're trying to look for a few more elementary as well, just to make it a little simpler on the people down there, but we have Jan Sands and Rob Jeffers, who is at the high school, and we have Paige, and we have Sharon at the elementary levels. You're a squadron stationed there, and you're at Central. And so they can kind of get to the other schools, or they all meet together. And Henry James is my school, so we help out with those folks. The mentor teams are matched according to content area and building as much as possible. And once in a great while, that's not possible if it's a music person, they haven't been a person in that school. So they might be, you know, from say middle school to high school, to be matched with a person, but as much as possible, at least content area and as much as possible, building match as well.
And that's not the case in many, many school districts.
Right, absolutely. Planning meetings in September for mentees, there's a little release time. I think our date is going to be the 24th this year, where they're going to have a half-day session where they can really go over this process, what is the, you know, the cycle that they have to go through, and begin meeting with their mentors. And it's a new day, the new teachers are getting together then that day, which is a great time to get them to, you know, really start to work together, look through the indicators, and go through that process.
Laurel, the mentors go through specific training as well. It's not anybody just can't choose to be a mentor. They have to go through hours of training themselves in which to do it. So we've got a number, we've increased the number of people. We were a little short at one point, but increased the number of people that are certified or trained in which to work with new teachers.
And if we didn't have these willing staff members, we would not be able to give all of the new teachers a discipline-specific building mentor.
It really is asking a lot of the mentors, much different than it used to be with the Best Portfolio system. They do have to devote at least 10 hours per module, which is a lot, when you're talking about all the different meetings that people are already doing. So it's a wonderful...
And that's a minimum.
It's a minimum, absolutely. I mean, there's something, as Jan well knows, there's something well about that. So monthly meetings, we hold fourth Tuesday monthly meetings. Great time to bring them in. We'll do, you know, PowerPoints, have them work together with the mentors. Sometimes we do ones that are very tailored towards the mentors themselves to give a little extra training, you know, how to deal with different types of personalities. So it's a wonderful way to really just get you to understand the whole person. You know, you really are here to help them through this process and to be a support. You are not evaluating them, you are helping them, just like that walking over that mountain together. It's really us helping them, being the person they can go to as a mentor. And as a master mentor at the school, that's really what we facilitate with them in any way we can possibly be there to help them. They're being evaluated by other people. And there's plenty of evaluations going on and set up for them, so it's nice to have someone that's non-evaluative that they can go to and speak with. There's informal visits by, you know, for Jan Sands, where the district facilitator will come in and speak with people or see them and see how they're doing the process, but also the master mentors at the schools will go and just, you know, jump in and say, oh, how are things going with you two? You know, give us a little insight, you know, where do you have questions? And along with those fourth Tuesday meetings, which is really wonderful. Next slide is the mentor calendar that we've created, well, and Jan has kind of really established this from the beginning on, of things that you do month by month, you know, the first kind of introduction to even just the school. I mean, when you have a new person coming in, it's really, you know, you don't know where the copier is, you know, you want to know where the library is, what can you do in the library, where do you make your laminations, if you have something to put in your room, just little things like that. So establishing your school and what's available to you, you know, meeting people that they might not know, it's going to meet the guidance counselor, the behavioral specialist, if you happen to have it in your school, different, you know, people that you would need to talk to throughout the time you were, when you have questions about things. So going through that with that calendar. And the next slide, we have release time equivalent of two full days per year per team, so they are able to get a little release time to go and observe each other. It's nice for that mentee to come in and look at the mentor and see how they're teaching, how they're dealing with discipline, that is their first module they have to work with, you know, ways they manage their classroom, which is really tough for that new teacher. It's something that's very foreign to you besides your student teaching, you know, placement. So that's a lot to take in that first year. And then obviously the mentor going in and observing, observing, excuse me, the new teacher as well and talking with them about what they should be kind of working on, looking at, you know, how can they improve certain areas? So it's a great way to have that, again, non-evaluative way to kind of just talk about things, you know, get things out there, what's a different way we can approach something? We've also established that we give the book, The Art and Science of Teaching, to all the new teachers in our system. It's wonderful, it's a great benefit that we have that's been provided by my folks here. Thank you.
We have just one more thing. Our administration is very, very supportive in trying to align the new teacher evaluation system with the team process. So thank you, Erin, Matt, Sue, and all the principals, because they might have double or triple the amount of work as a new teacher with this team program if the building principals and our central office administration did not say, let's look for ways that we can align these two so that the work is doable, given their busy days also.
Especially with the new evaluative system coming in, it's so, it's complex for teachers who have been veterans. It's so hard. So for a new teacher coming in, it's overwhelming, so that is great that we have that alignment.
So I think, as you can see, we have a tiered approach to this, and Sue and I working closely with Jan, but likewise, the master mentors, the four or five of you that work directly, these are like the leaders of this work for our new teachers, and then the mentors that work directly with the new teachers. And these folks have put an enormous amount of time into really training and offering training to people in our district, and I, it really, I can't say enough about the fact about the support that we can give to our new teachers and the seriousness that all of you take when you're working in this capacity. So we thank you and appreciate you giving us the opportunity to hear about the work that you're doing. So if there's any...
I just wanted to say thank you as well, and I think that, you know, we understand how complex the work of teaching is, and then coming into the profession at a time when I think is more challenging than ever. And I think what this does more than anything is open doors, and it gives permission to people to ask questions too, and go to people that have a level of experience that they might not have yet and have those questions. And we've talked a lot about professional learning communities over time as our teacher teams, and how our teacher teams function and set goals and collaborate, but really, this is an example, I think, systemically of that concept of a learning culture that's bigger than just teacher teams. It's how we start to operationalize, and I think the more we can build on these kind of structures, but to your point, Jan, make them coherent with what we already have so we don't continue to fragment is really important, so.
And it's also a win-win. Mentors for us, it is a way to stay fresh and rejuvenated and to avoid stagnation and to keep wanting to learn with the people around us.
That's great.
Sure don't want to take any of our requests. We do, 70s, 80s.
Do you want to take my head off?
Any questions?
No, thank you. You know, one of the questions I have picks up on it takes a lot of time. What's the feedback you're getting from your participants as to having the time or the right, the balance within their day to be able to fulfill this, you know, relative to other demands? Do they feel they have time, or is it like really a lot of stress to fulfill this commitment? What's the sense you're getting from people on that?
I think we're pretty creative in terms of having the time to meet, but unlike the Best Program, this makes a lot more sense, because as a beginning teacher, you need to get your classroom in order, you need to figure out your transitions. So you're taking an area that you say, it's not really working the way I want, this is what I want to happen, and you're implementing it right then and there. So it's time well spent. It's not time that you're videotaping for four hours and cutting it and things like that. So it's really, makes a lot of sense and it makes, so that's one area that they're like, okay, that worked, next year when I start, I know I'll be able to do that. So it's time well invested.
Yes, I agree.
That's a good point.
It is a lot of time, I will say. You'll hear new teachers that are like, oh my gosh, I have so much to do. They do have a lot of meetings, they have a lot of demands, so I'll be very honest, they are feeling stressed. There's, you know, no two ways about it. But it is, they do, it's funny because at the end, or even to the middle, after they get through that first module, and they're like, wow, that's really helpful, I use that all the time now. You know, these things they learn through the behaviors and the management of their classrooms, so it's amazing to see that progression, and I think they really appreciate it, and when they probably come back and speak to the new teachers, they're like, it's worth it, it is, it's a lot of work, but it's worth it, because it is, it is a big process. It is kind of daunting when you're a new teacher.
Is there one of those five areas that participants seem to be least prepared for or get more value out of than others?
In terms of the standards?
Right.
It varies.
Erin, Matt, you can please give your opinion. They seem to have a lot of trouble with planning. There's a lot of, it's very difficult sometimes to say this is planning and this is instruction.
Right.
And we spend a lot of time on the planning piece, talking about how that's everything you do before you enter the classroom, and going through how to really analyze the process of planning for instruction.
And that's, the first two modules are the ones that are the foundation, the classroom environment and planning, and that's what they, or our other teachers do instruction and a choice. Our first-year teachers are doing environment, because you can't teach if you don't have a classroom environment that's conducive to learning and/or you're not planning in a way that you can implement the curriculum. Those are the areas for focus for the first-year teachers, and then the second-year teachers do the instructing and assessing.
Just two more questions quickly. I assume you have some of the mentor-mentee relationships that just don't really click? And what percentage are those, and how do you deal with those as you run into them?
I'm a language person, not a numbers person, but it's very small. We have had occasionally an issue with, because this really is a relationship, and it can't be just, it's not a sterile environment. So we have had, I'm going to say, I, how many years?
Probably the whole time we've done it.
I'm going to say two.
Maybe two, I think you're right. And probably the past at least four or five years. Right, right.
That potential was considered with the planning, right? There's a process to meditate.
Yes, we have, we have a protocol for... Right, right. Trying to match them up with a like personality. And like I said, we do have days where we'll talk to just mentors too and talk about how there's very, very different people. You might be an older folk, no offense, but, and these young ones coming in that are into technology, I mean, it's a very different generational thing that we really, we talk to, we speak about. So, you know, in most cases, they really understand that, especially going through the mentor training, they are talking about that as well.
There's a lot about adult learners and coaching, not just, this is what you should do.
Right, right.
And so we really try to prepare people for what's in store.
So you're obviously picking the right people and training them right, you have that small percentage.
Great mentors. Yeah, or mentors are...
There's also, there's a process. It's, again, like Erin said, it's not like someone says, ah, I think I'll be a mentor. They have to approach their administrator, their administrator, I believe, signs off on it, recommends them to the process.
They have to be recommended to be a mentor in the first place, yeah.
And just my last question, one thing that's impressive to me is the effort to really integrate this with the core curriculum as well as the teacher evaluation. So with all the intensity of conversation around core curriculum, any insights as to what you're learning as professional teachers in terms of your own comfort, increasing discomfort with it, likes, dislikes, just, you know, as something, as the tidal wave that we're all going to be experiencing, just any insights from this experience?
I would say just plus for collaboration, just being able to work it out, talk it out, to try it out. And that's just a focus point, to be able to do that, or to help the new teacher try it.
Right.
It's, you know, we've got a lot to learn, but when you step back, you know it, you can do it and you can support them that way. Let's try it this way. It's a great way. It's a great way to get it started, I think.
Yeah.
I'm excited about it, so.
You know, one of the realities, and I'm kind of saying this more for the public, is you just can't drive towards increased performance without more collaboration, without more planning time, without more integration. When you want to have a core curriculum that's implemented equally, it just drives a lot more administrative time. And, you know, and that's part of what you're saying, and it creates stresses for the staff because it's more to do, but, you know, I just also point that out, because a lot of times, people look at the schools today and say, why are teachers out of the classroom so often? Well, if you want an excellent coach, that coach needs to be spending time talking with, you know, their peers and planning.
Well, that's huge, and I will say, time is the biggest factor. It really is the biggest issue that we hear from teachers all the time, that, you know, I barely have enough time to get that done, so.
Right.
It's important to have that professional time to be able to really meet with, you know, with all those folks. So there's a lot of difference.
And likewise, for this leadership team, they have other responsibilities to the state for taking on this role, and that they have to read other papers that are submitted around the state. So these folks are doing stuff on their own beyond the school day, as the, it's a web-based program, all teachers in the state of Connecticut are submitting their papers, and these folks are readers of, and they don't know who they're getting.
But that is also to help us help the people here, so.
That's great.
What do you do with the papers?
The papers are submitted at the end of every module that they do. Say it's, you know, three to four pages, that they have to kind of explain the process they went through, give us data of what was achieved through that process within the, I guess about eight to 10 weeks that they're using. And they have to show evidence of that. So as reviewers, we look at that and we decide that they've shown the evidence or not. And in most cases, people really are very thorough, and they've really explained what they have done through that process, and you can see the growth. So, and that's what the process of reviewing those papers is about. Very different than the portfolio.
They must demonstrate how their new learning impacted positively student achievement or student performance.
Exactly.
But we have to go to training for that also.
Yes, we do.
But then what do you do, I guess, what do you do with that? Do you report back to the state?
That's a state reported.
They go back to the...
They score them.
So that's the assessment component of each of these individual teachers after they complete a module has a reflection or a paper they submit. So this is, it's an interesting shift that took place between the old way, where the state assessed it as part of this new plan. The state has put that back on individual districts to figure out a way to do it. So it's almost a consortium of teachers that have put themselves in the pool to assess the development of these new teachers.
But this is a voluntary program?
The beginning teachers must...
Voluntary in terms of the state? I mean, the district doesn't have to have...
Yes.
I recognize the value, it seems amazing, but...
Nothing about this is voluntary.
It's a mandated, it's not a mandated program. They can't get there.
Give me a little background, wait. I think to give a little background, previous to that, and maybe Erin and Matt, you can jump in, previous we had Best Portfolio for assessing that. So how many years now have we not been using Best Portfolio?
Five. Two thousand nine was the official new year.
Nine, ten? So the state legislature and Department of Education and Education Committee had, you know, looked at, we've been using Best for how many years?
Many years.
Forever, never?
Almost were involved. We were involved in the Best Portfolio.
I was going to say at least 20 years, we've been using that program, and then mandated to each district in Connecticut to now go with the team.
Teachers will not get their certification if they don't pass the modules. They have to pass the modules in order to become, to move from a provisional to a professional to pass the modules in order to become, to move from a provisional to a professional certificate. So.
What we've had is flexibility in how we create this as a team, approach this as a team. So there is a uniqueness to the way we're doing.
Got it. And yeah, again, I recognize the value of it. I was just curious.
But you're mentors.
We are mentors as well.
But all the mentors are volunteers.
Well, there, no, there's a.
They do have a stipend.
There's a stipend that is stipulated. The state, you know, gives us a sort of a range of how we have to do this. But their positions as master mentors is an application process. And we interview, we talk, and we have five positions that we fill for that. And they don't have duties at their buildings and things like that, because.
We have duties.
Yeah, we have duties.
I did.
Many, many duties.
Please don't take the duties away.
I'm the official greeter at Squadron.
Thank you very much for coming.
Before you go, I just, I want to pick up on, on what you said, because, you know, I remember when, when the best program was being, you know, decommissioned, so to speak, or evaluated.
Sunsetted.
Sunset, sunsetted, and the new, the new team program was, was coming into place. And, and, you know, it was, it was a hard act to sell, because the best portfolio had been around for, what, almost 20 years? And, and this new, this new program was coming in. But what is also interesting, which I also hear, and you had mentioned before, Jan, was that not a lot of districts, and I think Erin also reiterated, do the approach that we do here. We are exceptional, the way that we have, from day one, started the mentor-mentee program and the support with, with, with veteran teachers aligned with new teachers. Not a lot of districts have that luxury to be able to do that, or the support, or the financial to be able to push that. So that is something that is known around the state, that we support. We have done that, I think, from day one.
Well, we work hard. You know, with any mandate, you take what you think is going to benefit you as the district, and we put smart people at the table and figure out how it will be aligned and coherent to the work that we do. So you make the best out of the mandates, and we think this, we've done it in a way that makes a difference.
Absolutely. Just my last question. When you have teachers from out of state, I'm just curious, what are their thought? Because each state is different, you know, when they, from however they want to call their previous best portfolio or their team, how do you see their evaluation pieces, or how do they, the out-of-state professionals?
This piece of participating in team?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Well, actually, they get over the initial shock that they have to do this.
Right, that's understandable.
Definitely, that could be shocking for some people.
Yes.
You know, if they've taught for 10, 15 years somewhere else, and then they have to do this. But I, I'm a firm believer and cheerleader for this program. And once we get going, once they meet the people that are going to be their mentors, and they see the practical, daily relevance of this program, we sell it. And so do the mentors here. And I believe, I know I'm Pollyanna, but I believe that everyone ends up buying it, because they really do see that this has a positive impact on the kids in the classroom, and the collaboration and collegiality that it builds among of staff.
And if that doesn't work, we have two celebrations a year at Abigail's. One in January and one in May, supported by the SEA. So that's kind of.
The reason why I ask this, and, and just to bring that on, is because I do hear from other states, you know, I do hear from other state associations in my position for President's Cave, and, but I do hear from other states, how, when they look at that, because we're watching very carefully, you know, we've gone from a best to this, and now with our new ed reform. So many states, you know, see this. And it is, it is very different. It's apples and oranges in 50 states. There isn't one set form of the evaluation as we move forward with that. So it's interesting to, to, to hear your remarks on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So as we just continue into the school opening report, I'll talk quickly about those teachers now that are in the next phase of attaining tenure. They've been in our district either for four years, because there came to Simsbury and had not been tenured in any other district, or after two years of being tenured someplace else in the state of Connecticut. And we welcomed 11 teachers at Convocation. We publicly bring them to the front of the auditorium and give them a little gift. So it's really a fun celebration that we do at Convocation as well. So those are Sue's slides, so this is my slide. So let me tell you a little bit about the work that we did over the summertime in regard to teaching and learning, after we hired all of these folks. We continued with our summer academies, our literacy and our mathematics academies this summer, that were well attended. We had 19 teachers. And over the last couple of years, we've brought on students from Simsbury High School to be volunteers. People that, students that might be interested in becoming teachers or exploring whether they enjoy that kind of work, participate in our academies that are held at the elementary level. This year, we actually had a new program, which is a math enrichment program, that really focused on problem-solving skills, which was also well-attended and a great addition to our summer offerings. We engage, teachers engage in a number of professional development opportunities over the course of the summertime. Some of them are collaborative kinds of opportunities in regard to curriculum design, development, aligning the Common Core state standards to our current curriculum. Did some of that work, focused on teaching instructional strategies in the classroom that help implement the Common Core. But we had a number of elementary teachers that participated in that. And what we've done with those last professional, those last days in June, Professional Development Days, is really, Betsy's created a nice opportunity for teachers to get their materials and their units of study, that they can preview and review over the summertime, so that we don't have to spend the August time and hand it to them, and then have to have them teach it the next week or two. So that's proven to be a very well-received opportunity. At the secondary level, we've continued our curriculum work and spent an enormous amount of time this summer. We had over 82 teachers working on curriculum in a variety of different areas, English, math, science, social studies, music, and really have done some good work around the redesign of our curriculum frameworks. In addition, there's a number of teachers that go out for their own professional growth and development. There's some that we sponsors, and there are others that go out on their own to explore. Again, we've had some teachers that went out for advanced placement training, project lead-the-way training. Remembering that project lead-the-way, you cannot teach the course unless you've been trained in it. So that is certainly one that we support. Lori Martenson, one of our new instructional coaches, went to a math leadership academy at Mount Holyoke College, and it was very intense. And came back with lots of great information that she's been sharing with our instructional coaches. So she spent a week there. I also got some information from Barbara Barker, who is a science teacher at Simsbury High School. And on her own, she was called, she participated as a citizen scientist in an investigation of the effects of residential composting on scavenger ecology. And she did that through Trinity College. So that was her own professional growth and development. But they sent us information on that, and I commend her for doing that work. And it's really, just broadens her experience as well. And the Simsbury Arts Academy had, again, a great, you know, summer. We had 35 students in grades one through three. We had 110 students in grades four through 12, through looking at visual arts, strings, jazz, musical theater, and had the culminating, Seussical, the musical event that, that occurred. And we have, not only our Simsbury educators that participate, but professors from Hart, from Central Connecticut State University, Hartford Symphony, so Cindy and all the fine arts. And Sims, Cindy Rem is just masterful at directing that program. So again, it was really a very busy summer, and we've accomplished a great deal. And people have grown and developed, and really have enjoyed the opportunity to work with their colleagues and with students over the summertime.
Good.
Very good.
All right.
Good slide.
That was it.
Well, actually, packed into one slide. Just a brief update on enrollment. As you know, we provide a larger enrollment update on October 1st, which is the enrollment date that we officially report to the state of Connecticut. But we always take a look at our opening day enrollment, which on August 28th was 4,364 students. Pretty close to our projections, we're about 25 students off. And I know that we had several new enrollees, like day two of school, there were 10 and 11 people up here enrolling their, their children. So it does mark a decrease of 121 students from last year, which is consistent, as I said, with what the, what the projections were. Overall, as that breaks down, we had a reduction of 83 students at the elementary level. And I think, as you'll recall, we reduced three sections, three FTE, at the elementary school last year. So we were right on target with what I think we talked about in the budget process, is kind of strategic and responsible reductions of staffing levels as our enrollment continues to go down. So we'll have to do that again this year and really pay special attention to that. A kindergarten cohort of 233 students, which was actually about 21 more, almost a full classroom more than what we had projected in kindergarten. So we're going to have to continue to take a look at that. I don't know if that's still the effect of the full day. But this year was projected to be a much lower number overall compared to other cohorts, and then it's going to start to pick back up in kindergarten. So an interesting piece to, to look at. Henry James was enrollment of 732, which is down about 15 students. The high school was 1,534, which was down 23 students. So the decline there, not as significant yet, but in the next couple of years, when these fourth, fifth, and sixth grade cohorts move on, we'll start to see a larger dip at Henry James, and then subsequently at the high school. Open choice enrollment, we always report that out on first day to the board. We have 139 open choice students, which is about 3% of our population. We had 137 last year. So staying consistent with that number. In terms of class size, our class sizes really look very good. At least the analysis I've done at the elementary level, we report back on this, on 10-1 as well. We had one classroom in the entire elementary level that was over the guidelines to start the school year. It was a, a single class at Squadron Line that had 23 students, with the guideline being 22. So I can remember, three, four years ago, we would start the year 11, 10 regularly sections over the guidelines. So I think we've done a nice job in kind of mitigating that and managing that. And I know that's been important to the board, important certainly to our parent community and our teachers as well. So we will come back again and do a much more detailed breakdown of this, looking forward, and locking in the number on October 1st. So I can answer any questions that people have about.
I think some of us can remember looking, scrutinizing the over-class guidelines too, and how many we went last by class. So, so it really has, has improved.
Yeah.
If it worked out right. Alrighty.
So Mr. Leclerc is going to do the piece of school security.
All right, yeah. Standing in for Su Lamke, we each have portions of this area, and.
We're really outing her tonight.
Those are pictures.
Just throwing some in the box.
Those are issues.
Of course.
Her role as liaison with the police department, she is, she was involved, and we're happy to welcome as a new school resource officer, Todd Kushman, who was also assigned not only to Henry James, but is going to be floating at the K-6 schools throughout the district. And he joins our current school resource officer, Brad Chase, at Simsbury High School. So we've gotten off to an excellent start there. We're really, we're really pleased with the support from.
Just add one piece on that. My, my first day of school, we all, as, as a central office team, would go and visit each and every school. Each time we got there, Todd was like one step ahead. He was at every, every school. So it was nice to see him on day one, you know, into graining with all the, all the kids. It's really an exciting opportunity.
And he's been a police officer in town for a while, so he already knows a lot of the, right, community.
Now, our largest physical project regarding school security, I recall, was the classroom door lock project. And that was for five of our seven schools. Latimer and Simsbury High School already had the newer style of classroom locks, which, to review, is, is a lock that you don't have to exit the classroom to lock. You don't have to go out to the hallway to, to lock. And we've had very good success with those. So more than 318 classroom doors, hardware both outside and inside, was replaced through this project. We'd gone out to bid in the spring. And as you may recall, we had estimated that it would be $171,000 to do those five schools. And in part because of favorable bid pricing. But the other part of it was, we ended up being able to use our own in-house maintenance staff, several of our staff, to do the install at two of the schools. So that saved us more than $10,000. And we were able to get that work done over this, this summer. So Steve, Steve Twitchell, supervisor buildings and grounds, was really the lead to get all of these details done, working with the contractor. So I'm really thankful that that, that went smoothly. The next area is more of the follow-up to our consultant's security audit. ERCM was the firm that you recall receiving a report on last spring. And they'll be following up with some visits this fall. And they'll be doing some drills with our schools. And we're going to be utilizing the standard response protocol to try to make a more consistent and simple approach to dealing with situations in our buildings. Another area that I'm working on is developing cost estimates for the protective window film concept. That is something that helps to, you know, made it very, very difficult to, to break a glass door or, or full-size window that you could gain entry into a building with. And one of our neighboring districts has done some, some bid pricing, and we're finishing up, just actually received final measurements on some added doors. And we're going to be getting ready to seek funding on that, and to go out to bid. And then lastly, we'll just be following up in each building with recommendations and modifications. Steve Twitchell and I met with each principal this, this summer to, to follow up on the consultant's recommended list. So that's a quick snapshot of what we're, we've been doing and what we're planning to do this fall.
Have you seen other towns utilize the, the film process? Are they?
It's been, it's been utilized. I don't think there's been huge numbers yet. There's, there's definitely a recommendation of our consultant. And we saw some, some good firsthand footage that really made it seem like a worthwhile investment to deter somebody from shooting their way in, breaking their way in with a sledgehammer. It is that amazing.
Yeah, we saw that film.
And it does not show visible, it's not, you know, it's not going to change the appearance of our appearance.
Very cool. Any other questions?
So the opening of school report on this PowerPoint, I'm going to try to just weave a few of the other things in here in the interest of, of time.
This is my favorite part, though, when you have pictures.
Yeah, let's.
Right, and, so we just mentioned the lock upgrade project. That's a picture of a particular lock mechanism, and those are the.
Do you want our impression?
Are you a photographer? I can't take credit for most of them, only a few of them. Steve, Steve Twitchell was great to provide a lot. Simsbury High School door replacement and refurbishing project. This one, there were 60 doors that our custodial staff at Simsbury High School, as you can see, they utilized the shop, they sanded all those doors down, and stripped them, finished them, and put two coats of finish. And you see the doors on the right. It really came out great. So that's something that kept the folks busy this, this summer. Next slide, please. At Henry James School, we had some new flooring installed. This was in a particular part of the, of the building, where we had moisture problems over many, many years, moisture seeping up. So we've got a, a special flooring in these four classrooms that should really prevent that from happening again. Also at Henry James School, we were able to do a, an air conditioning unit. You see it being installed here with, with the crane above the computer lab. There's a lot of extra heat generated from the PCs there. And this has been something we've been hoping to do. We were able to recycle here, because a little bit later, we're going to talk about the modular removals from Tooten Hills modulars. Those were rooftop units that we were able to move over there and utilize. This is not just at Henry James, just happened to choose this one, but our in-house plumbing staff was able to do many, many upgrades of bathrooms in virtually every, every building throughout our district.
It's the first thing my sixth grader mentioned.
Good.
The new bathroom, which was very impressive. Very well needed, very well needed. Very happy.
Both fixtures, as well as the partitions, in many cases. Central School, as you mentioned earlier, we had started with a portion of lockers, and now we were able to finish the, these new updated lockers for Central School.
I just want to make sure that all lockers don't have to become 100 before.
100 years old.
I think some of them.
Let's see.
Well, I think some of the bathroom fixtures were just about that.
No, they really make a difference, though. They really, really.
And so, nothing's in the halls.
And we will be definitely doing that in other schools, and have some, some quotes for some, and some more.
Added at Squadron as well, right outside the kindergarten classroom.
We did a small bank of lockers at Squadron, and that was actually related to the movement of, of the Tooten modular programs over to, over to Squadron, which then had sort of a ripple impact. So we needed some, certain sizes for our kindergartners. Latimer Lane School, showing you one of our follow-ups from year one of the facilities and enrollment task force. Recommendation was to remove this white trailer, 706 square feet at Latimer Lane. This was actually exposed before it was moved, and you see now that has been removed and the site restored. At Squadron Line, whilst Henry James, we're doing an LED exterior-like project with some reimbursement from the, with these two utilities. Also at Squadron Line, we improved a couple of areas of our exterior traffic flow. There's gates at both ends of the entrance road that goes past our playground. And the drop-off area, when you come in, tried to follow what we did at Henry James, and create two clear lanes. One is for dropping off, and one is the drop-off. That was ready. That was ready to start school. Now, Terrifield School, we did 95% of that renovation project a number of years ago. The last piece of that was able to be finished this summer. And that was involving the asbestos remediation of the old tiles and the old flooring. Those moves were able to be done over the summer and then a new synthetic surface put down. It's a multipurpose room, we're bad at school, and it's really come out.
Looks great.
That really finally finishes that renovation project. At Tooten Hills, besides modular removal, we did improvements to flooring. This is off of the nurses and principals and the main office going into kindergarten rooms. And as mentioned before, the Tooten Hills project was a very large one. We had approximately 8,700 square feet, I think, of multiple buildings. Just chose that first one to show you that the utility meters were back there. So those are gone. That was one of the primary financial benefits here because they had separate service. Some pictures of some of the process of it being removed. And now the area that remains, the next slide is the last one. It's quite an expansive area, as you can see. Now, instead of the building, it's kind of going right up against the fence and tree line in the back, there's a nice open area there.
Perkin, I would just add here that as we look at our 10-1 enrollment, we also had made the agreement to come back to the Facilities and Enrollment Task Force with an update where we are and a relook at that Phase Two of modular removal to see the potential and the feasibility of that. So it's kind of an annual check relative to that initial project.
So, yeah, just with the particularly short summer program moves that really started from Tooten Hills, a lot of staff involved in planning of preschool that had been moved to Squadron. Meg, who had to deal with how to relocate multiple programs, including preschool ready-to-go, and then redistributing within her building, moving kindergarten. Things went very, very well. Steve Twitchell and his district-wide management staff and all of our senior students did a fantastic job getting us ready for this one.
Good, thank you, Perkin.
Thanks so much. That's an awful lot of work. Appreciate it.
Really looks great. In a short summer, you're right. Tremendous improvement.
A lot of, yeah. Wonderful.
Good. Alrighty. We are now on... Where are we?
Yeah, we're on to CMT and CAP review. So Aaron, Betsy, and Helen are here. And we're going to do this, I guess, a little bit differently than we have in the past. And it's a little earlier. We received our data from the state of Connecticut about a month, a month, almost a month and a half later than we normally do in terms of our results. And we certainly use those results for quite a bit of the planning that moves forward. So a lot of that work is going on now at building level, and Aaron will talk about that. But we felt it appropriate to come and kind of just talk through the data globally, not as comprehensive as the prior reports, with the recognition that this is probably the last CMT and CAP report we'll have in front of the board because those two assessments are going away. And we're, Aaron will touch on this in a minute, we're going to probably participate in a pilot this year, and then we're on to smarter balance next year. But I think it'll give an opportunity for you to ask any questions you have relative to those two data platforms. And we'll be coming back later in the year with building principals in the fall to talk about how they're kind of goal-setting and doing their work at the building level. So a little bit different approach, but we wanted to get the data out there.
So this is a highlight that we're presenting to you tonight on the CAP, the Connecticut Academic Performance Test for 10th graders, the Connecticut Mastery Test, and special populations. And as Matt said, given that we received the data mid-August, teachers and administrators are digging deep into it. And it is one data point, it is our data point of standardized measurement. But we also have district measurements that teachers are using. And all of this information and the data that they're looking at is what's informing their professional growth and development plans that they're putting forward for the teacher evaluation plan. So they're very deep into it. Matt and I are actually going out talking with principals over the next couple of weeks to get their perspective on their data points, including whether it's the CMT or the CAP, as well as district assessments. So what our objective tonight is to really give you a highlight overview of Simsbury student performance on these standardized measures. And as Matt said, we presume this will be the last kind of presentation of this manner regarding the CMT and CAP. So we'll start off with the CAP. And just so that, to refresh you, that the CAP tests in four areas. It's 10th graders, mathematics, science, reading across the disciplines, and writing across the disciplines. And what this graph shows you, and this is one that we thought when the commissioner, when the results were distributed to the districts, the commissioner held a conference call to help explain some of the high points that he saw as a state level. And saw, what he said for CAP, a pretty steady performance with some low areas and some high areas as well. But this is Simsbury's performance as it relates to the state performance in this particular visual. We look at the results here and we're looking, we're very pleased with our steady performance on reading, writing, and math. And science is an area that we will continue to talk about, and you'll see that as we go through this data today. There's some disappointing results, but steady results in science, but also some interesting results in regard, when we talk about some advanced level of performance for our students in science. So as we look at our results, we continue to remain in the top 10% in the state for our results for 10th graders. We have ranked either fourth or better in our district reference group in reading, writing, and math, not in science. Over the years, we have, you know, had a very consistent level of performance from our 10th graders, which indicates that we have a very strong curriculum that's guaranteed and accessible for all students. So when we ask ourselves, how do we get these results? We... Thank you. One of the things, and I think you've heard us talk about it tonight, not only through the opening report, but with our team, master mentors and facilitators, that our teachers are engaged in collaborative conversations about the work that they're doing. They do this through professional learning communities. And we do this at the high school level through content areas, whether you teach English 9 or US History. Teachers get together and they talk about student performance, and they talk about instructional strategies that they're working on. We work hard. I work closely with Neil and the high school administration to design professional development that's just in time and embedded work that, professional training that will assist them in their implementation of the curriculum. We also are very fortunate to have the financial resources that the board supports. And one of the greatest investments that we believe we've made at the high school level is putting in some of these labs. We have labs in math and English and science and social studies. And they're staffed by the content area teachers. So when students have a need for extra support, they can get it through these labs. So we think that's also helping with our consistent results. And obviously, our teachers at the high school level, we have very, very smart teachers that know their content. And that certainly is a benefit in our classrooms. So as you look at our results over time, we have a very consistent performance in math. We have a very similar consistent performance in reading and the same in writing. Our science, although consistent, we just can't seem to get out of that 70% area. And it's something that we want to continue to explore. We want to dig deeper into it. And we want to look at our district assessments and see what that's, what kinds of information that's giving us as well. When, one of the goals that we have talked with you a lot about is we want to measure progress by the number of students that meet that advanced band. There's five levels. Advanced being the highest goal, proficient, basic, and below basic. And so we're always working to get our students 50% or more. We've done that in science and writing. So let me just talk a little bit about science. This is what's so interesting when you dig deeper into the data, is that we have 53% of our students in science achieving in the advanced band, yet we still, the total amount is at 70. So it really causes you to ask questions, why is that happening? We have the more students, we only have 20% at goal, and 20% of our students are sitting in that proficient band. Those are kids in science that maybe with a little bit more could have met goal. And so that's a large number of students in our proficient band. When you look at our proficient or above, and some communities will report, all of our, if we took all of our totals, we have either 95, 97, or 98% of our kids proficient or better. But we continue to report to you that goal or better. So our students are learning. We have a very small number of students in that basic or below basic. But this science data is one that's a bit perplexing to us, and we want to dig deeper into it. This particular visual, I thought, is another one. And what we're looking at are some very similar trends, whether it's our performance in Simsbury, whether it's the performance by the state, or the performance that is at the district reference group, DURG-B. And look at those, the pattern of that. It's a very similar pattern. So we're trying to make sense of that as well on how we perform. Strong performance in reading above, obviously, our DURG counterparts as well. This is one of, a few years ago, we began reporting this out, one of, another marker of success and something that's really important to us when we look at our students who take the CAP test in 10th grade, is how many of our students are meeting goal or better on all four, on math, science, reading, and writing. And this year, we're number two in the DURG. We have almost 62% of our students that have met goal or better on all four of the assessments. One of the things that we're always looking at, I mentioned earlier, we're within the top 10% of performance at the state level. But we also want to look at like communities and how we perform against them. So when you look at reading, we do very well. We're second in reading. We are fourth in writing. And when you look at the next slide and you look at math, we are fourth in math. And we are, this is a piece that is of concern to us, 11th in science. So that trend of trying to get a little deeper into the data and trying to figure out what our course sequence is, what are our learning outcomes that we're asking kids to engage in over time, we'll be spending time, the high school administration, Neil Sullivan and myself, working with Greg Core at the science, in the science department, to try to figure that out a little bit further as well. Likewise, the CAP science is not going away. The CAP science, although the rest of the CAP will not be in place, the CAP science will be in place until, they're telling us, until about 2018. So we have to pay attention to this and try to figure out what this means. So that's the big picture of the CAP performance for 10th graders at Simsbury High School. They are now our current 11th graders. And so we're, high school teachers are really looking at data, trying to figure out who are those kids, what do we need to do to help support them? And likewise, what are the kinds of things that we need to continue to do to enhance the learning for those kids that are already meeting goal or beyond as well? You will hear more. This is one aspect. As I said, there's multiple data points that we look at over time. Neil Sullivan always does his high school report. He'll do that later in October. And this will be one piece of it. These slides may return just to give you a comprehensive picture of student performance at Simsbury High School. But he will be back to share that with you. So the second portion of this presentation is around the CMT. CMT is for grades three through eight. And I've asked Betsy to support us through this, but I want to see if you have any questions.
Aaron, can I just say, like, the one slide that kind of caught my attention is this one right there, that one. One more forward. It's the one that talks about all content areas.
Oh.
And it's, I don't know, it's 60...
This one here, right there.
60, yeah, 61%. And I know, I know that stacks up as very good relative to the other towns and whatnot. But, you know, at goal on all content, it's 61%. You know, I know it's one measure of how kids are learning and how effective we are as a community in terms of delivering what they need. But, I don't know, it just didn't feel all that good that only 62% of the kids are at goal or...
In all four.
Well, what it is, is that, that means they've passed, they've probably passed three of the four.
I'm with you.
And that's where the science piece is a little bit bothersome, is where we have the 20% in the proficient band.
Yeah.
Is certainly adding to that as well. Because kids potentially could have passed three and not the science.
I guess, I mean, one other thing I add, I think it's, you know, I agree the number in and of itself. And it's a data point, I think, like any of these other data points that we've learned this year, you really do need to benchmark yourself to look at trends, both state and other districts. And this particular measure actually is the one we do...
Pretty good.
Better, I mean comparatively, better than any of the others. So you try to wade through the relativity of it all as well in what it really means. But I understand the question.
What struck me on this one is, you look at the top six or seven, 2012, just about everybody dipped down. But then 2013, that same top six rebounded to higher than 11. We came up, but not quite as much.
Those are the kinds of things. And when you look at, it was this particular slide here, it's the patterns that are so similar. There's other questions when you look at the data. There's the numbers, but you have to dig deeper into, who are the students? What are the, what's the content that you're teaching? What are the strategies that you're using? Who are the teachers that are teaching it? There's so many questions that numbers present to us as educators, and we've got to try to wade through all of that. And that's why we try to use this information as well as our end-of-course assessments or other common assessments that we use in the district, because some of those are even better predictors to how students are performing. Because I'll tell you, when we dissect this information and we pull out those kids that fall in that proficient band, or, and it's like, there's a story behind every kid. And so trying to figure out what it was or what it is to help them move to get to that next level.
With our number of elementary students, the physical number of students going down changes the statistics as well because we have fewer comparisons. So it could be just one kid. It's last year, it might have been four kids.
Right. It does make a difference.
I mean, these numbers do, one out of the high school...
To that point, you take that school to school and comparing the data of State Terrifield to a Squadron Line school, if three kids or four kids out of a smaller cohort at Terrifield just moves the percentage.
It can move the needle.
So that's why it's important to really talk about individual student needs.
So it's good, but we have to keep it in perspective.
Do you ever kind of do a recon with the kids who took the test to see how they felt about it, how prepared they felt? Or, you know, is that something that happens?
You know, I...
They take it?
Not...
They never want to speak again. We know the truth.
Well, I'm... There is informal, it's, yes, there is informal. There's lots of adults that are working with the students and monitoring and overseeing the assessment. And there are conversations that take place, like, that was really hard, or I had no idea, or it was really easy. I don't know, Jacob, how, I mean, it was two years or a year ago when you took it.
Yeah, I felt pretty well-prepared, you know, from all of the tests.
Yeah.
I just, the conversation in my house, because my daughter is one of those CAP statistics up there from last year, was that the science was daunting and that everybody said it, that it was really hard and they didn't know a lot of it.
We get that feedback from kids.
And...
That's where we take, because we do get examples of what they were assessed on, and we begin to align that with our curriculum. So there's those pieces that we have to pay attention to.
Yeah.
And it's the same thing at the elementary level. When the fifth graders take it, we're looking at what kind of science instruction they're getting up till fifth grade. And then when they take it again in eighth grade, what is, what are the knowledge, the skills, and the understandings that we're asking kids to engage in when they get to that eighth grade level as well? So...
And you don't want to teach the test because you want to, your curriculum is based on...
We hope that good instruction is good instruction.
Good alignment.
Right.
Right.
So, thank you. So we're going to ask Betsy to give us some, an overview of the CMT. Likewise, we haven't quite done it in this fashion, but we are going to engage principals in these conversations, Matt and I, but also ask some of them to come forward to you to give you some ideas of their, how they've dissected and analyzed the data, and then the action plans that they're working on with their teachers.
Thanks. As you may have heard this summer, when the scores were finally released to districts and the public in early August, the commissioner did share that there was a decline in performance across all grade levels and across all tests in the state of Connecticut. And as we look at our data, we certainly follow that same pattern in some areas where the scores were a little bit inconsistent. There were lots of things to celebrate. But we also did follow the similar pattern. As you look at Simsbury performance, which is in blue, as compared to the state performance, which is in red. One of the... One of the reasons the commissioner shared, and something that we certainly, districts and certainly the folks here in Simsbury support, is that we are in a transition period from the, we're implementing the Common Core state standards in our curriculum, as well as getting ready for a new assessment. And while folks are paying very careful attention on what's coming ahead, it does mean that teachers are very hyper-focused on this new learning. It takes them offline a little bit from other types of opportunities to engage in some professional development that we may have already done, and not, I'm saying we here in Simsbury, but I think districts across the state, as we try to build the rationale for this understanding these scores. And so we can really point to that as a rationale for some of the inconsistent performance that we've seen here in Simsbury, as well as our neighboring districts, and certainly those throughout the, throughout the state. We have lots of things that we want to highlight and celebrate, and some noteworthy highlights and cause for celebration include our grade five science scores, which are the highest they've ever been since testing began in science in 2008. We had about ninety-one percent of our students in grade five scoring at or above goal in math, huge accomplishment for us. Grade seven scores improved in all tested areas as compared to our 2012 results. And almost ninety-seven percent of our seventh grade students and almost ninety-four percent of our eighth grade students scored at or above goal in reading, which are the best results we've had in eight years. So we've certainly had steady or improved performance, and we also have had steady and improved performance in the advanced bands across all grades. The data also clearly identifies three specific areas of focus for us, and we've highlighted for those in blue, those for you in blue. The first being our grade three reading performance certainly took a more significant decline than we ever anticipated. We are also looking carefully at our grade four math scores, which took a dip as we compare those results from previous years. And we're also looking at our grade eight writing scores, which although they look strong, it's an area that is, and we'll look at this, at the data a little bit in a different way in a few slides, but it's a, it's a test that our performance has been declining over time. And we want to make sure that we take a careful look at how well our students are writing and the types of opportunities that we're providing those students to write more. There are two things, data points, that we monitor very closely when we look at our results. The first being that target of having about fifty percent of our students scoring in the advanced band, and also looking at when those numbers do shift, where are students falling, what bands are students falling out of. And so we happen to notice more students falling in our proficient bands in grades three and four than we would like to see. But yet, we have some really nice steady performance with students maintaining the fifty percent or higher in those advanced bands. Looking at math, you can see that nice trend in grades five, six, seven, and eight. In reading, we have really high numbers with sixty-six percent of our students scoring in the advanced band in reading in seventh grade, and sixty percent of our students scoring in the advanced band in writing in seventh grade. So those are things we're very proud of. And as Erin mentioned, we're still in the process of digging through this data. This data just became available to districts around August ninth. And teachers are, have their hands in this data, they're working with their principals, they're working with their grade level teams, and really looking at the students who've moved from band to band, and taking a look at the students who are scoring in the proficient bands. As Erin mentioned, who are these students? What changes did we have in the curriculum that may have impacted performance? What are some subgroups of students that we have to pay careful attention to? So we are really mining this data to make good sense of what these shifts mean for As we look at our math performance over time, it certainly shows solid performance in math, especially in grades five through eight. We're really proud of the results we had in grade five, where we scored third in our DURG. The green shading represents an increase in the performance in grades five and seven as compared to this 2012 result, so that's where we saw an increase in looking at that annual performance. The data also shows the performance of different subgroups of students. So these are not the same students, it's just how students tested at the particular grade. But the data does give us information about our curriculum and instruction. So one of the areas that we're targeting, and you see it in circled in red, is our grade four math results, where we took a more significant dip as we would have liked as compared to our DURG performance, as well as looking at that state trend. And that's something that we're mining and looking at the students carefully, looking at our intervention plans, and these students are now in fifth grade. So not only are we just looking at the curriculum that is being taught, the instructional strategies that teachers are using, but also looking at how we can support these students who have moved on to fifth grade. One, Erin, could you go back for just one slide? Thank you. I just want to point out that in grade six, that is the one grade level where we implemented a Common Core-aligned curriculum last year. So that is an area where we knew that we needed to be part of this transitional process, so we needed to roll out that curriculum in grade six, so students would be adequately prepared when they took this smarter balance assessment in the middle school. And we're pleased with that performance, but it is a bit of, it's a small decline from where we were last year, but somewhat to be expected because of our focus as we look ahead in implementing those Common Core standards. Vertical scale scores allow us to look at student growth over time, so we can look at cohorts of students, so we tend to look at them over a three-year period. So if we look at the current grade five students and we go back to their performance in third grade, we can see that as a result of these vertical scale scores, our students are making nice and steady progress over the years. And these are the same groups of students that we monitor and we measure their performance to make sure that they, we are closing the gap and they are making that anticipated And we couldn't resist but putting a gold star next to the results of our grade five science. We are thrilled, and this is no easy task for teachers and our fifth grade teachers, who really are charged with delivering a really intense and rigorous curriculum in fifth grade, but also providing opportunities for review for their students, because they do have to remind and refresh the skills that they've learned and the content that they've learned since third grade and fourth grade as well. So our teachers were wonderful about providing opportunities for students to come in for clubs, to stay in for recess, and got very creative in finding great ways to reinforce some previously learned concepts. And the eighty-seven percent of our students scoring at that standard in grade eight in science as well is something to be very proud of.
Well, it's working. It's working.
Yeah. The strategy will continue to, to put and keep in place. Our reading scores, our 2013 reading scores show strong performance in grades five through eight. The green shading that you see on the right-hand side of this graph here, of this chart here, shows that we have maintained at least ninety percent of our students scoring at or above goal in grades six through eight for the past four years. And that's stellar. And so while our students have had some inconsistent performances in reading in the primary grades, by the time they get to grade six, and this is something we're trying to figure out, why in grade six, why in grade seven, why in grade are we maintaining that performance at very, very high levels? So they're getting there, but what's happening in those primary, those younger grades, those earlier grades, that may be getting in the way of that stellar performance that we're seeing later in those students' years in our elementary school and into the middle Again, this is the vertical scale performance over, as we look at the cohorts of students over time. And this, while the 2013 data shows some inconsistent performance in grades three, four, and five, clearly our cohorts of students are making steady progress from year to year and are showing great growth in their reading skills. As we look at writing, I just want to remind you that there are two parts to this test. This is the, in the past, you've had a little quiz where we've given you a question on your editing and revising skills and asked you to select the right answer. We're not going to do that tonight. But I just want to remind you, that makes up part of this assessment, as well as the holistic score, which is a student's writing sample where they're asked to write to a prompt. So these scores represent the total of those two subtests. These are very solid scores across the grades with incremental growth in grades four and seven, where we saw a bit of an increase as we compared our performance from 2012. And we ranked third in the DURG in grades five, six, and seven. This slide shows you our average holistic scores, looking at how students have performed from 2010 to 2013. We've highlighted for you the right-hand column, which shows our 2013 results. And so these scores range from two to twelve. And so the fact that our average scores are, is a nine, a nine point two, nine point four, nine point three, is exceptional. One area that we focused on, that I mentioned earlier, that we're targeting as a focus area for our work, is our grade eight writing. Because if you look at the writing, the average writing holistic score over time, it's not going in the upward direction, it's actually going in a downward direction. And so while we have some hypotheses around why that might be, it's certainly going to be something that Brian White will come back and talk to you about, his thinking around this data, around this trend, and some action steps that he's going to be putting in place this year to address that. Helen, I'll turn this part over to you.
Okay, great. So I only have a few slides to talk with you about tonight, and primarily that is because we'll do a little bit more of an analysis when we meet together for my special ed review. So I do want to remind you that most of our students take, students with disabilities take a standard CMT or CAPT, and that means the standard assessment, most likely with accommodations to make that assessment more accessible to them. Some students take a modified assessment, which is aligned with grade level standards, but the format makes it, again, much more accessible to students who average probably typically skills two to four grade levels behind, and there are certain criteria they must meet from the state in order to take an MAS assessment. And then we have our skills checklist students, again, downward extensions of grade level standards, but certainly very modified in how that assessment is given. So we have about three point nine percent of our total population taking alternative assessments. The benchmark for the state is three percent, so we're a little high as far as how many students are actually taking alternative assessments. So that should be addressed when we move to smarter balance, because that test supposedly is going to be accessible for all students without taking alternative assessment. Okay?
Just because of the way it's delivered, like more computerized?
Computer-adapted.
Yes. Yep. And so it sort of assesses you as you enter into it, and will modify the assessment accordingly, as far as we know. But we don't know a lot about it. So we're staying tuned, you know? So this is combining our scores for CMT and CAPT. And so what I really want to stress with you, when Betsy and Erin presented their scores for students taking CMT and CAPT, and the ninety percent students achieving goal or better, our special ed students are included in that analysis, in those scores. So that's very positive. So students who took the standard CMT, students with disability who took the standard CMT are included in those assessment scores that were presented. This particular slide shows the students who took the assessment, standard assessment, the percentage that met goal, and we do like to look at the percentage that are proficient. That's, that's an important marker, although we're not checking that with the state necessarily anymore. It's still important to know that most of our students with disabilities are proficient in those areas. And many are, you know, our target is about fifty percent, and we're, we're just about there. Writing is the one area where we're not. Remember that that's an assessment that we don't have an alternate MAS assessment for. They have to take the standard assessment there, so we would expect that it is a little bit lower. But when we look at the data, it is writing across the board that we have our most concern about. So this is, compares your grade level performance of last year to this year's class. So we're pretty pleased that we're maintaining high levels in grades seven and eight. Those are very significant scores for students with disabilities. And again, that's, I think, a large reason why we're at that ninety percent, you know, it includes our students with disabilities. And so we also note that our earlier grades, just as Betsy explained, there are lower scores. And when we do think about it, that students with disabilities enter into special education, even enter into SRBI intervention at that earlier grades, and they're just getting intervention, intervention, and we hope that we do see increased scores as we go through the years. We might expect to see lower scores for students with identified disabilities who are just entering into our special education services at the lower grades.
So last year, Matt and I presented to you the NCLB waiver, where this brought forward those district performance indexes and school performance indexes. And what this waiver indicated is that it was looking and capturing performance across all bands and graduation rates, but with particular focus on subgroups. And there were five subgroups that we were asked to pay close attention to: students with disabilities, ELL, English language learners, free and reduced lunch, black and Hispanic. So we have some data points here that we'll show with, show to you right now, our comparison Simsbury performance with those against our DURG, our reference group. So when we look at special education students and their performance on the CMT in math, reading, and writing, we are outperforming those other special ed students in similar communities. However, our English language learners were not faring so well in math and reading. Writing seems to be pretty consistent, but we need to dig deeper, we need to look at who these kids are, we know who they are, but figure out why they're not performing on math and writing, and math and reading.
Did the number of those students change, or has that been pretty consistent?
We've seen a decline in our overall numbers of ELL students, and it's, it's a moving target. I was expecting about five additional students this year, and they moved, they stayed wherever they went to visit over the summer, or they decided not to come. So it's just a number that you can never project exactly, but we're actually seeing a decline as we look at those numbers over time.
How many do you think we have?
I, we are probably down to about, I'd say, forty-five to fifty students at this point.
So one or two students.
So it's really hard to deal with.
This is close by.
Right.
Does make a difference.
And that's overall, not even in the testic grades.
Right.
But still worth looking at.
So what's the, I'm sorry. Someone else was asking a question, I think.
Go ahead. I was just encouraging them to keep looking at, I'm not dismissing the data.
Yeah. I mean, just what are the, any initial insights as to, this is a pretty dramatic variation from who we compare ourselves to? Any initial insights as to what might be behind this?
Well, I think that's, we work closely with the ELL teachers, so.
Sure. Yeah. I think what's important to note is that, you know, behind these numbers are students. And if students have been in our country for ten months of less, or ten months or less, we don't have to test them, but after that, we do. So they may have been in the U.S. for two years, and we have to sit them in front of this test, and they take it and they do their very best. So we have a lot of our students actually scoring in the proficiency band, but this is the goal target that we're looking for. So they're making really nice progress when you look at their overall performance, but we obviously want more of them, to get them to goal. But we do have a handful of students and a handful matters when you're looking at a small number of students who haven't been with us very long. And it takes them more time to acquire those skills, and you just don't know how that compares to other district students who are, who have identified ELL students. They may have had students who have been here longer and are just taking a little bit more time to acquire the language and meeting the standard.
And I think we'll be able to bring more information back, because principals are talking with their teachers as they're looking at their data. They're not just looking at how the group performed, but they're going deeper into the subgroup performance as well, so really looking at who those kids are. So that's what we intend to bring back, is some more information to try to figure out exactly who those kids are and what might be contributing to these, because it's something that really makes you stop and say, we got to pay attention to this, where we might not have done that in the past.
Right.
Our free and reduced lunch students do extremely well in math as compared to our counterparts in our district reference group. Reading doing well, and writing a very consistent performance. And again, these are very high-level views of the data. This is not, like I said, there's a number of kids that fall into each one of these bars, and it's important to go in and take a look at each one of them individually. And this slide is inclusive of our black and Hispanic students, and again, we're doing well in comparison to our reference group, but again, trying to figure out where we can continue to do even better. So the goals that are being developed and designed at our school levels are asking teachers to pay close attention to these five subgroups as well.
This comparison is a very similar chart to the one we started our presentation with tonight as we looked at the CMT scores, but it includes the addition of a green line graph. And that green line graph represents the DURG-B districts and those average scores of those districts as well. And you'll notice as you study that and look at that, those lines, Simsbury follows a very similar pattern to the DURG, as well as to the state, with the exception of the three areas that we've highlighted for you tonight throughout our presentation, which is grade three reading, that shows a decline, or a dip in performance. Grade four math, where we fall below the DURG, and grade eight writing. And those are. And those are the three areas that we've highlighted, we've identified, we are talking with principals, principals are working with teachers, teachers are working in their teams, to really get behind that and to put some solid action steps into place. So, the data mining is well underway. Further analysis and action plans will be shared by the principals to you at an upcoming board meeting later this fall, where they will share what those actions are that they're taking in their buildings, and grade levels they're taking in, with their teams. We received these results in late August, a month later than usual, and we need a little bit more time to examine this data a bit further, to really peel back those layers, and to really drill down to who these students are. We want to examine the data and identify students who shifted bands, as I mentioned earlier, and we want to compare that movement to their 2012 performance on these assessments. We want to analyze subgroup performance in those receiving intervention, and make sure that we have the right intervention plans in place, and get the right students identified who might need additional support, and get that up and running, and that actually just started this week. And we're clearly taking a closer look at our cohort performance on the CMT, to ensure that all students are making adequate progress in those performance areas across those content areas. Our teachers are focusing their collaborative conversations and their PLCs on high-leverage instructional strategies, in determining what those effective interventions are for all of their students, especially those that they need to provide some additional support. And we are going to be continuing to provide our teachers with support with that job-invented coaching that we're so excited about, that our newly hired instructional coaches in both literacy and math are there to do, and there to support. And so, that is well underway, and we've started those relationships between coaches and teachers, and those partnerships are up and running.
And I'm glad that you brought the ELL. It's going to be a very interesting trend to watch, that cohort, because of this NCLB waiver. This is one area, and it's not just only our district that is facing this, it's the entire state, so this is something that we will keep very in tune with. Very good.
We'll be monitoring that very carefully.
Absolutely. Very good.
Liddy, can I just ask one question?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I would imagine that so much part of the success is for a teacher to have good data on students. Do we, across all subjects and all grades, is that equal in terms of the quality data that's presented, or are there variations to that along the way?
Are you asking about the other data and the other assessments that teachers have that give them information over time? I think we have a pretty comprehensive assessment system in place. As I mentioned earlier, we are really looking ahead. We've been given that direction by the state to start looking ahead at what's to come. And we're really trying to make some decisions about how to, what are the best instructional practices, what are the best assessment practices that will give us good information about our teaching. So, teachers do have a comprehensive assessment plan for those grade levels. We're constantly making adjustments to those assessment plans as we look ahead to implement these Common Core standards, but they do have the information at their fingertips to sit down in PLCs to look at how students are doing. It's a fine line that, you know, we're walking right now, because we do need to see what's coming ahead, and really shifting our energy and our focus on making those improvements, while really focusing on good instructional practices and the core skills that students need to be successful.
Betsy, on that too, just, you know, as we've developed our data system over time and gone through changes, I think it's important that we don't, for lack of a better term, drown our teachers in the data. You know, we have specific high-leverage data points that we know are good predictors of success, and we identify those, and we stay true to those, and we don't, you know, those formative pieces along the way are important to the teacher to make decisions, but from an analytic standpoint, they don't need to slow things, slow things down. I think we need to work through that a little bit, as well as we've been getting more comprehensive with that over time.
Any other questions?
Good report.
Good. That was a very conclusive report. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good job.
All righty, we are on to Exhibit 10, Review of the Board of Education Subcommittee Assignments. And as you know, we do this every year, we just have a very, it's the one page that we'll be discussing this evening, right here in front of you, and you know, our Standing Committee is our Policy, Personnel, and Negotiations Curriculum, and we are now going to be presenting before you a new committee, Communications Committee. This is something that we had been talking about when Matt came on board.
Putting you forward.
Am I ahead of you?
No.
Just a second. The Communications Committee will be a new committee, and it's something that when Matt had come aboard last year as superintendent, we had talked about establishing Communications Committee for the purpose of being proactive and benefiting the school system, since there's so much that we do need to discuss with media and outlets and what have you. So, that will be our new committee here, especially in light of reform coming, education reform at Common Core, there's quite a bit of information that's got to be dispersed via school system out into, out into the public. And Martha Hogan, who is our staff person here, will be also the one working with Matt and Central Office in the communications. So, if you see your names underneath either of these committees that you've been assigned to, if you have any question about moving committees, please let me know, but also, we will need volunteers, not this evening, but you can let me know if you're interested in also being on the Communications Subcommittee. So, that's there. And below you, you have the temporary committees and the liaison committees, so please review, look at that, and let me know if there are any changes. But basically, we've got a very big year ahead of us in each of these committees, in particular, Mike's committee over here, so...
We're busy.
Very busy, so that's it. All right. With that being said, we are second public audience. Anyone wishing to address the board, please state your name and address, and see...
Dame Street, Director of Athletics and Student Activities up at the high school. I was just wrapping up the first day of fall sports season, and I knew there was a board meeting, so I figured I'd swing by and give you a quick report. I walked in as you were giving the back-to-school report, and so, along those lines, from a student-athlete standpoint, we have over 540 student-athletes at the high school.
Can I have you just sit so that you are in front of the microphone, so they can, they can type that? Absolutely.
So, we are at 500, over 540 student-athletes for the fall season, which is pretty consistent with where we've been in the past, and it was a great first, great first day today for a lot of our teams. We were 11-1 overall, so, a great opening day, and just really exciting that as I enter year two, some of the challenges that we weren't able to get to last year are still ahead, and so, I'm looking forward to those, so just wanted to give you the heads up on a great opening day.
Very good. Very, very good. You're welcome to come by every time. Put this on your calendar twice a month.
I hope to see more of you this year.
Can't always guarantee we're going to be a second public audience at 9:18 PM, but thank you very much, Dame. So, with that being said, seeing no one else entering into public audience, I'm going to ask for a motion for executive session. We are going to be entering executive session to discuss attorney-client privileged communications.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.